Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand and seventeen, Select Board Meeting being held at the Amherst Regional Middle School Bandroom. It is now six something, six oh five P. M., and this meeting is called to order. This is one of our unusual pre-town meeting sessions during which we have no public comment. And in fact, tonight, I don't even think we even have any visitors coming to see us that we're aware of. And so this will hopefully be a rather brief meeting, but we always like to leave it on the schedule just in case stuff comes up, because Steph tends to do that when you're in town meeting session. And in terms of actual items tonight, the one thing that we had planned that we would do tonight is we would look at our calendars. We had previously received a couple of different versions of this calendar. A slightly different version of it is on our desk tonight. And basically, the staff took off the meetings we've already been having over the last couple of weeks because it was a May schedule. And so they reflected reality rather than possibility. And so this does not include a meeting for tomorrow night, and we can talk about whether or not we intend to have town meeting tomorrow night in terms of what we intend to recommend to the body in a little while. But that's why this starts with the fifteenth, which is next Monday, which we're assuming at this point will still be, will still be in town meeting for. Given how things are going, it feels theoretically possible that town meeting will indeed end prior to July, and so...
Why are you jinxing it?
I said July.
You did say July night, too.
That's why some of these are bolded in terms of May twenty-second as being a regular meeting, meaning just a mere two weeks from now. We could be having a regular meeting back in the town room because town meeting was over. And if not then, then June fifth. Of course, then we start to run into the fact that at some point this summer, we are more than likely not going to have all five of us together. That's just going to be the reality. We will absolutely avoid that happening when it comes to dealing with the town manager's evaluation, for example, because that's just how we do things in the Select Board. But there might be some other meetings we do in fact need to hold simply because most of us can be there and we have to get some business done. So this is the calendar we have in front of us. Is there anything else that's obvious as to just not going to work since you've had a chance to look at this more?
So...
Sure.
Why it looks like this. So what we tried to do is look with the schedules that you had for the summer, try and map that on here, and then look for a meeting schedule that was somewhat regular, like every other week. Because I think it's healthy for our department to have an every other week's schedule for the summer at least. And that's, we tried to match it with your schedules when most people are here, and this can be moved around or added meetings, obviously. So the bolded ones are the ones that Deborah and I sort of took a crack at, because these would be good meetings to have, but obviously this is a couple few when you want to meet. And it's, you know, the sort of short change month is August because of the schedule, so...
Two meetings.
Not unusual, I think, in any meeting.
So if the rest of you want to take a moment to dig through more of your papers so I can find out the old version of this, we did want to be cautious and not have anything possibly go online that indicated when people might be away. We do not try to advertise when we're actually going to be away.
So I have a...
Go ahead.
An edit, as it were.
Yep.
So the twelfth of June, as well as the nineteenth, I'm actually in town but not available because of events on those evenings.
Okay.
So you can just add me as a dug away to June twelfth, which was only going to happen if town meeting happens, is the way I'm reading it.
Well, again, by then, by then, we will surely be done with town meeting. And so the question is, given that we have such a short month in August, is there an appropriate amount of material that we need to do stuff in June? That's where it starts to get tricky.
About what's coming up on the calendar.
Yeah. That would be worth knowing. Only if you want to give an overview, that would be fun.
Yeah, so when we started to map out what was in our agenda planning, things coming up would be, next Monday would be the recreational marijuana first look, and then a discussion about fall meeting dates, fall town meeting dates, staffers reaching out to all the critical people on terms of what days they're, what we can figure out. Well, for two weeks of November, I think typically is when you start looking for that. May seventeenth, there is a possible pre-removal request. That's still not verified yet, but just for at four fifteen, Shade Street. May twenty-second, we were looking at liquor license policies, which we have a draft of, we're not... We would look at, depending on when town meeting concludes and resolves, close town meeting wrap-up, so we would go through everything and see what actions the board needs to take, like some proclamations and things like that. And then I think June really starts to build into committee appointments and reappointment process and the performance evaluation and goal setting for this town manager. And that, those are time-consuming tasks, I know. So those are the major things that we see coming up, the time-consuming ones, I'll say.
And do you want to add to the list, because we haven't had a meeting where we've sat down and updated the history of the town meeting, so we'll want to add how about sixty thousand that's been added to community services?
That would be like the post-town meeting. Oh, yeah, you want to plan that on the dictionary, understood.
And part of them, there's two reasons for that. One is we're definitely going to need to call it out as its own item.
Yep, got it.
And the other is that we have, never is a strong word, we do not normally actually debrief on actions we still need to take. What we normally debrief on is the things that we need to, we feel the need to talk about in terms of how things went, how we might do things better at the next town meeting.
Okay.
And we share that with TMCC. It's a really good idea for us to also have a list of, okay, these things were asked of...
This has to go to the Attorney General, this is...
Yes, that would be helpful. We've not done that before, so that would be good. And the sixty thousand would be part of that. We would just want to make sure we call it out as its own agenda item.
But also, you took that as a separate action from town meeting to have that meeting. So you're right, that should be a separate agenda item.
But I'm referring to the meet, that's two issues.
Yep.
So there's a meeting in September regarding all of community services.
Yes.
And then there's also an agenda item in June, roughly...
Yep.
That says this is what we'll do next to figure this out. Not that we'll have a solution, but to let people know that we're continuing to follow through on that. And as you say, there may be other items. Traditionally, we have not done a fantastic job of that sort of follow-up, but we will do better this time. So thank you for thinking of that. Yes, Ms. Kruger.
And looking at the schedule, it occurred to me, where we have a sparse month, that there may be the flexibility among us to have a daytime or morning meeting if we had things like a backup of licenses or things that people were waiting on us to act on, that maybe there would be some flexibility to add something in daytime hours. I have a flexible schedule, but I don't know if that's true for others, but sometimes the summer allows for some of that flexibility.
That is a good point. Sometimes it does, not for all, but some, enough for some that it may make it work because as you say, if it's licenses, and we only need three people there to do it, it may be much easier to get those three people together to do such a thing.
Even if it's not in Amherst Media Broadcast, which it might not be, depending on the, you know, the sort of, how much, you know, public interest there would be, you won't have to guess at that.
I'm fairly certain that the reason I'm scrambling through my pile here to look for my previous version of this is because I gave it away at one point when I was saying, add some meetings here and drop some meetings there. And so actually, it was all add, and then it was drop. And I suspect that that has been well incorporated into this, and I don't pretend I haven't memorized. But one of the things that I was looking at then that was making it challenging was our town manager evaluation process in terms of our reading night, seeing what each other has written, and then being able to see if that is reflected in the chair's summary report. And that is, frequently involves a couple of meetings, not just the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. The fourteenth is too soon for the evaluation probably to have been prepared, especially when people are away prior to the fourteenth, they're more unable to run. And the, and the twenty-eighth is getting a little late, although, you know, we have some flexibility on that, too. And mainly, it's that we do the evaluation and then we are able to have executive session, but we are also able to then start talking about goals because we like to do that as early as possible. So do we want to say that, given what we know now, we would not schedule June twelfth as a regular meeting? It would only be a pre-town meeting if needed because we know we have two people away. We will bear in mind that there will be a, there's the possibility of having summer daytime meetings for straightforward things, minutes, licenses, parking issues, potentially common, little things like that. The, we prefer not to do a tree removal that way. We prefer to have a larger group available for that. So is this looking like it relatively supports with what you, I mean, we need to change things if we have to as time goes, but it would be good to have a sense that these will work for people now? And then we would have a motion, on our motion sheet?
Yeah, the one thing I would just, for disclosure purposes, on August twenty-eighth, I will be in town, but I may have a conflict for a portion of the meet, that could overlap a portion of the meeting so that I could be possibly late for that meeting. So it depends on what we're anticipating doing on that day, but now, given that four people will be here, and I basically will be here for part of the meeting, if not all of it, and can't tell you for sure, I would suggest not doing anything with that date.
But we'll keep that in mind so that if that turns out that's going to have some association with town manager evaluations, a question as we get closer as to how much of it will be that night, and we will just assure and ensure that we don't do it while you're not there. We'll do something else while you're not there. Other questions or comments along those lines, or does someone want to read that motion?
Do you mind if I read it?
No, I was going to say, I've still got a chunk of, as I mentioned, I've got some uncertainty around the late July and first part of August, but...
You know, we just can't work with that, Mr. Wald.
We had you blocked out for a month, Mr. Wald, because of either way.
I believe remote participation comes to mind.
There's just not a lot we could do with that at this point.
No, I don't mind.
So as you, as we find out, however, you know, as we get closer, then we may want to shift something from one week to another week instead.
Before we have the motion, another thought bubble here. Since the fourteenth is, August fourteenth is when people are coming back, so there's some, you said it's too early for certain things, August twenty-eighth is getting late. Might it make sense to consider, I think it would be August twenty-first, as one of the adding...
We were missing someone during that week.
Oh, okay.
And, and the other problem is the fourteenth is missing me. And so, and you. And so the fourteenth is, I don't know why it doesn't say some members are away because...
So that, so we would have four members and maybe the assistant town manager, or we'd be on our own.
That would, we cannot, we're not going to do the evaluate town manager.
No, no, obviously. I didn't mean, I just, I'm considering the viability or the desire to add August twenty-first, if that made any sense, because we knocked out August seventh, and I understand about the pattern of every other, but we have the opportunity. But you said somebody wasn't here on the twenty-first.
Andy's not here.
Andy.
On the twenty-first.
Okay, so we'd be...
And I'm not here on the fourteenth.
No, I got that.
So in both cases, we can do some stuff on either the fourteenth or the twenty-first. And so those should have been treated equally by this chart, which I did not see prior to now, so...
I wonder if we should do it as a placeholder, and if we decide it's not viable or we don't want to do it, knock it out, but that way at least we've held that as a possibility.
There's, yeah, there are two, right, town manager. So there are two of us missing the four...
Away the fourteenth.
Well, one select board member and the town manager on the fourteenth, one select board member on the twenty-first. It's just not, it's just not good, is what it comes down to. It just conflicts. And there's not enough time to do it, like, later in the week, prior to the twenty-eighth because there's a return date that's right before the twenty-eighth. So we, we are kind of stuck. So at this point, since we haven't mapped out the evaluation process deadlines yet, which we can do and then play with this a little more, what do we want to reserve at this point? Do we want to reserve the fourteenth, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth? Do we want to pick just the twenty-first?
Maximum flexibility.
Why not do it?
Why not map all of them out?
Yeah, and then we can change on...
And then we'll figure out which ones to drop as we get, as we get into the evaluation process, which is something that's going to need to be later this month.
Yes.
So that we make sure we have all those dates lined up, and there's a traditional set of material associated with figuring that out, there's a process, and we just have to update the dates and then work from there. Okay, so we've got, not the seventh, but the fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth.
As possibilities.
And that way, they're just all on there, and we all know, eh, it's not going to actually likely to happen, but we'll take them for now, so we've got the space, and we'll go from there because we will be, we will have a portion of time, for example, between the seventeenth and the fourteenth, where we won't be meeting, we will be meeting, but not with a full complement of members. And it sounds like Mr. Wald will probably overlap some of that July time as well. So we will do the best we can, and we will, as we do with most other things, shift items around so that areas that are of particular global interest will not be covered while people are away. All right, so we've crossed off the seventh, seventeen, and twenty-fourth, July are all on there. The nineteenth of June's been removed altogether, and the twenty-sixth has been put in its place since the last time we got this.
Right, because the chair at that time won't be here.
Right, that makes a lot of sense. But the twenty-sixth is not something...
July twenty-sixth would be...
June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth.
Well, it's missing one person.
It's missing Andy, yeah.
Yeah, there's no consistency here as to who's away, who's not away. So we continue to figure this out, and we, we're going to be missing somebody a lot. And I think once we start to map out, once we sit down and map out not only the town manager evaluation process, but also these items that we talked about as a group, but not with specific dates yet, we'll be able to figure out what we can shift to another. And it may be that we need to have a meeting... Okay, so let's back up one more time. So if we have a meeting on the twenty-second because, as a regular meeting, because town meeting's over, that's useful and makes the need for more June meetings a little less critical. But we're starting to lose people as we move into June. May twenty-fourth, of course, would be a Wednesday, so that would only be a pre-town meeting. June fifth would be the next possible Monday. We know for sure we're going to miss somebody there, but you'll be here for that, Mr. Slaughter. Okay. Thoughts?
The only additional thought I have is that we try and traditionally meet on Mondays, but there's no statute that says Select Board can only meet on Mondays.
That is a fact. It's just really confusing for all of us, but yes, it is absolutely true. When it comes to the week of the nineteenth, Mr. Slaughter as the chair at that time, is there any other time during that week? You're just gone that week?
I'm just gone that day.
Oh, you're just gone that day.
I have an event in town that I'm at for part of that evening, so I can't...
So are you seeking to meet weekly during the summer, or are we...
We're just trying to maximize what we've got at this point, because at this point, what I'm not willing to do is I'm not willing to say, we are definitely missing the week that Mr. Wald's not here, we're definitely missing the week that Mr. Steinberg's not here, until we see what it is we're trying to map out against these dates. Then I figure we're going to drop a few of these dates. And we'll be able to do that within the next two weeks, probably, is to figure that out. But at this time, I'd rather...
Be inclusive than exclusive.
Be inclusive than exclusive. Exactly. Rather than trying to flip a coin as to how many times one person's going to be away versus another. So no, weekly, probably not, but we've already seen, we have a long list of things, and this is incomplete. So if we met the week of the nineteenth, week of June nineteenth, people are not away then that we know of. So what if we met a different day of the week of June nineteenth? Everybody pull out their handy little calendar.
Wait a minute, what are we looking at?
We're looking at the week of June nineteenth. The Monday's bad, but is there some other day that week that's possible that we may in future trade off against the twenty-sixth? We would probably not meet mid-week and then also meet the twenty-sixth, but we just don't know at this point which one we want to do.
So I'll answer for myself, but, and that is that I can meet any day of the week of the nineteenth, but the week of the twenty, on the twenty-sixth, I will not be here.
Right. Okay.
No, it's already done.
So handy away, you're away on June twenty-sixth.
Correct.
Although it doesn't say that on here.
Doesn't say it.
Correct.
It might have been, it just doesn't. I know, I'm adding it to my little thing.
So the nineteenth, so the week of the nineteenth, Tuesday's the twentieth, Wednesday's the twenty-first, Thursday's the twenty-second. Do we happen to know if there's anything exciting happening then?
Yes, not twenty-second, if at all possible.
Okay, so not Thursday, the twenty-second. All right, so do you, are you in town on Tuesday or Wednesday of that week?
I'm in town on the twenty-first. I think there, I have something on my calendar about there being an employee event, an all employee event.
Oh, like the staff barbecue, whatever, summer outing thing?
Something like that.
Okay, so that's the twenty-first. So what about the twentieth? Tuesday, the twentieth. Tuesday, the twentieth, theoretically possible to people? So looks good to me. So what we could do, given that it looks like we know that now, we could do Tuesday, June twentieth, instead of the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth.
Sold.
Sold? All right.
Sold.
Okay. Tuesday, big letters, Tuesday, June twentieth, regular meeting, and that's in addition to potential meetings on the fifth and the twelfth at this point till we figure out when we're done with town meeting. And then we wouldn't meet again until July tenth. Okay. How's that looking to people?
June fifth and June twelfth, did you say?
At this point, we know that there are two people that are going to be away. So no, we're taking off the twelfth. So we've got the fifth and the twentieth as being the only June meetings.
We're taking off the twelfth for sure.
Yeah, because we're missing two people.
Okay.
We just realized. And so the fifth and the twentieth, they're the only two dates we're going to be missing. Mr. Wald on the fifth, it looks like, so we will take that into account as we plan for whatever items those are, and hopefully it won't be because we're still here at town meeting. And...
And we would meet again on July tenth?
And then again on July tenth, the seventeenth, twenty-fourth. And at this point, we're, so we've got tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, then we've also got August fourteenth, twenty-first, twenty-eighth, again with the idea that there might, we might be dropping one of those. And then September eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth. So that would scan enough for me during Labor Day, if that doesn't work. Does that work? If we're now, it's moving.
So you're saying, May twenty-second, June fifth, June twentieth, Tuesday, July tenth, July seventeenth, July twenty-fourth, August fourteen, August twenty-one, and August twenty-eight?
Correct. Okay. And September dates, three September dates.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, I would.
I move to approve the, to approve the schedule, not to approve, to approve, as it says here. I move to approve the schedule for the twenty-seventeen.
Is that like a double negative, a double positive?
Exactly. Move to approve the schedule for twenty-seventeen Select Board Meetings, June through September, as amended. Second.
Any further discussion? Who says our meetings aren't exciting? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Just remember, we're not a nineteen-member council or anything like that.
Okay, so key updates. Town meeting, do you have anything?
Forward to the...
Yeah, regarding town meeting tonight. Does anybody else have anything regarding town meeting tonight? All right, so did you have anything else you wanted to talk to us about?
I have a million things to talk to you about.
Okay. Do you want to tell us, why don't you tell us the short one?
Okay.
And then maybe some things could go in the email.
Sure. Yeah, there's something I can put in the email. Dog Park Committee, we have, Mr. Wald and Mr. Pistring and I interviewed about sixteen people. There were twenty-three applicants. Some people weren't able to come in during our marathon interview sessions. We've selected nine to be appointed, and I'll send the list out to you. And it looks like a really strong committee with new people, people who've been in town for a long time, lifelong residents, renters, owners. The one common denominator is I think they all are dog owners. But it looks like a very strong committee. And Mr. Pistring intends to, I've asked him to convene that meeting, and he's going to do a dual poll on, for a meeting the first week of June. So I'll send out a poll memo on that to you.
When you say that sixteen out of twenty-three were interviewed, and of course, not everybody can make the particular interview date, were there people who were selected that weren't interviewed?
No. Well, just one of the proponents.
Other than Mr. Pistring himself.
And Mr. Diamond, Dr. Diamond was the other proponent.
Of the other proponent? Okay, great. And just in terms of some criticism that was leveled at town meeting about transparency recently?
One member of the planning board, to volunteer, not because of his nature of his...
So, Dr. Diamond, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, first of all, good June. Thank you to everyone who applied, and thank you to those of you who did all those interviews. That's a lot. And yes, as Ms. Kruger, I believe, has also pointed out, if any of those people are in the other committees, you know, we should be working on that. All right.
There might be some. We, just to update you, we continue to negotiate with Amherst Media. We had two negotiating sessions the first time. The first one was really a get-to-know-you, set-the-ground rules, have the first initial conversations. The second one, we exchanged proposals. We're scheduled to meet again next week with more detailed substantive discussions about each of our sets of proposals. So that is moving along pretty much on an every-other-week basis, which is good. The, the, the planning board and Select Board have talked about doing a downtown planning initiative of some sort, and we are working on organizing that so that we can have an event that happens in June and a relatively defined event that would then be revisited by the Keyboards in September. So there'll be a small group of us who are going to try and scope out what this will look like based on other experiences that we've had in planning, and then sort of circulate that idea out and invite people. We don't have a date, a location, time, anything, or an agenda yet, but that should work.
And then will you share the very large letters draft tentative agenda direction with the Select Board in an email from the town manager, in which case we could respond to him individually? And then if any of you feels it needs to be discussed at a Select Board meeting, we could do that then, but without seeing that list, that's, we don't need to craft things from scratch. And we know that the planning board's put a substantial amount of thought into this already, into what they were going to do. So we'll look forward to a town manager email with that.
The Business Improvement District Memorandum of Understanding expires, and so that has come to my attention, and we had a very preliminary conversation with the director of the bid, or I have had a preliminary conversation. So that's something I'll be eager for your feedback on as we move forward. Our agreement, when it was signed, was a three-year agreement. The University and the college, when they signed, it was a five-year agreement. They're, the bid comes up for renewal in a year, so they are marking that date in two thousand and eighteen as being an important date as they talk to their membership, and they're looking at, they're starting to reflect back on what the bid has accomplished and what they want to accomplish in the coming year. So it is, I think there's going to be a lot of energy on major issues that they'd like to address during the coming year.
And so you'll be signing a new MOU for a period of time, even though they have to go through the renewal process just because they have to?
Right.
Okay, so was that... Okay, so, was that something, we know that it's entirely within the town manager's purview to sign the bid memorandum, but was anyone expecting to see it before it got signed? Because now would be the time to mention that.
Maybe what I would do is I'll share, I'll share out the existing MOU, which I've just, which, then if you have comments on it or suggestions, we have not had any substantive conversations about it, it's just like, hey, we got to talk about this.
So, I guess, excuse me, it's hard when we're in a line like this, where you can't see me. My main question was, is it essentially a continuation, or do you see anything changing? And I don't mind taking a look, I had looked at the old one at some point, and I think it's manager's participation, there's an amount of money, and I don't know what else, what other commitment, but if it's essentially doing that, but for another year or longer, then.
The bid has a couple of small things, more logistical, we want to have a clear conversation about who takes care of what, i.e., the lower level, the parking garage, that seems to be, you know, sometimes the town does it, sometimes the, we want to be clear about who's responsible for certain areas like that, that sometimes, some things are sort of spelled out, but we've, through experience, we've learned that it would benefit from having more details.
To be more, okay.
So, so we'll get that.
Yeah.
And then you'll tell us.
Yeah, or even just.
Again, if you want.
If you see something, and like, why are we doing this? I happen to.
Right, or I've been hearing about one, because some of us go to their forums.
Yes, I guess that would be helpful.
Particularly like just giving us a heads up in some, in some fashion about those other, the sort of newer things, because the other stuff is probably just a continuation.
The, the, I signed the preservation restriction for the library, which has been lined in its way, this is something from the previous board of trustees, has not been executed, and so it has gone through the trustees, it has gone through the historical commission, it's gone through the town manager's office, it's now at the state for their review and approval. Everybody seems to be on board with all that, what that's looking for.
Excuse me, really briefly.
Yes.
Mr. Buckman, if that comes up tonight in the discussion of the library, which it could, then I would think maybe it would be appropriate for you to share that.
Sure. So everybody on the town has signed off on it, and now just went to the state?
Right, right, because it often comes up.
It will come up, it will come up at town meeting.
Be prepared.
It's a question.
Yeah, and that's the right answer, what you just told us is happening with it.
Yeah.
Or the best answer we have.
The, we have received a grant for Solid Waste Coordinators, you well know, this is something I'm told you had talked about last summer with Mr. Heck and Lecter, when the grant was applied for, I've not found anything writing on it, but the time has come now for us to execute the grant, which I'm inclined to do, and here's why, this, and I can share more information with you, if you want to think about this, until next week. The, it's a grant that pays about half the salary of this person, we would have to keep the person for two years, but no longer, the state would fund the entire first year, and then a portion of the second year, the way it's, the way it's organized. And then, and then we could make an evaluation whether we would be able to contain, continue this. The question was, how do we pay for this? We're looking at the reduction, I'm looking at the reduction in hours and stat, and this pay level of our community health director, as being the way where some of the funds could come to support this, as we start to ponder through this, for FY19, that's what we're really talking about.
So, a couple of things.
Yeah.
One is, this is going to be more than you thought it was going to be. So.
And we can make it an agenda item, if you like.
Explain again about the salary, because we've gotten somewhat different messages about it's half the salary for two years, or now it sounded a little bit like it's more of a salary for part of the first year.
It's.
So what's that?
The town contribution in the first year is zero.
Okay.
But there will be some ancillary costs, like if the person chooses health insurance or things like that. The second year, the town's dollar commitment will be $32,000.
And.
The state's contribution will be $50,000.
So this person will be paid $82,000 in, irrespective of benefits?
It'll, over two years.
I'm confused.
I have a question.
But we don't even, I can't even understand this most basic math, so, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to do that again.
They will be placed on our, they have to be paid $15 an hour, at least, so that works out to about $50,000 a year. But given our schedule, we have to put them on a certain schedule according to our personnel.
Okay, so here's, here.
Go ahead.
Coming back to this, so, one, there was in no way unanimity that we were ready to do this, when it came up before, and it was being pushed very heavily by the Solid Waste Master Plan and the Recycling Refuge Management Plan. It was not included in the budget purposefully.
It was, right, correct.
And so, that was a signal that we have not made a decision, if we had made a decision, we could have included it, then, even though we didn't know for sure about the grant at that moment.
It was listed in the budget as a.
As a possible. It was not agreed upon that that was a policy priority, that doesn't mean you can't do it anyway.
Right.
But that it was not necessarily a policy priority. There was a good bit of discussion around what this person's job actually would be, because it seemed quite clear from the information we were given, that it was in no way, shape or form, a substitute for what used to be Ms. Waite's position, but it was a completely different position that had to do with enforcement, not education. And so, what that actually would look like, we were told we can find out down the road, because there were still more to jump through, as to whether or not we were actually going to get it, what it would actually look like. And so, I'm not comfortable saying the select board thinks this is a good idea or a bad idea, when we don't, there's.
We don't have a job description.
Weren't busy town meeting time, we would know the actual dollars, both years.
We can give that to them, yeah.
And we would be able to compare that to all the other things we're not doing, that we wish we were doing, and what that person's actual responsibilities would be like.
Yeah.
And then I think we could make a more informed decision, but other members of the select board?
I suggest we make it an agenda item, so that we can see, you know, either a description, I had, we had that same question, it seemed, from what I'm remembering, heavily enforcement rather than education, which may or may not be as much of interest to us, and I remember that being an important thrust of the Solid Waste Committee, but not necessarily beyond that, that more enforcement was the way to go, and I'd want to know what the job description was as required by the grant.
I think I have it.
So we can make it a, and I know, I just, a short comment, and I'm sure we'll get to this, again, it's, it's a lot harder to let someone go after they've worked for the town and made connections after two years, even if you start out with, well, it's two years, and then we can let the.
Yeah.
It's really hard to do that.
Okay.
So, again, we understand that technically you don't need to ask us, but we would, we would like to have, we would at least like to talk through what the ramifications are, and then if you choose to make a decision and doesn't agree with ours, then that's what happens. Mr. Steinberg?
Just briefly, I think that there's a fine line between enforcement and education, because I think that some of the goal is really just to get people to comply, and education is a way of reducing what you might call enforcement in a heavy-duty sense. So, in addition to the budget, a description of the position would also be helpful, because I think that we're getting confused in the jargon.
Exactly, right, because you could just assume what those two words mean, rather than what they actually mean, and I'm guessing the grant has some specificity associated with it, based on what I remember of it from way back months ago.
Can we have a document?
Yep.
Great.
Okay.
So, other, of the millions of things you'd like to talk about?
The other thing I really want to bring up is that the next coffee with town manager will be on May 19th at Atkins Flagship Store.
May 19th.
I saw that in the news and announcements that we all subscribe to.
What time is it?
7:30 to 9:00 at Atkins on Bay Road.
Yeah, oh, I know, yeah.
And Dave Zomack, the assistant town manager, will be with me on this one.
There might, just on outreach, there might be a way to let people who live at Applewood know, and then there's also some associations for Hampshire Village and the Orchard, if they're, not to let everyone know, but maybe their officers could get the word out.
Oh, yeah, whatever their usual communication or.
Email, I'm sure they, they've probably switched to email by now.
Cool, what else?
That's all I have.
Oh, you can, ah, come on, okay, so, and just to back up for a moment on the Amherst Media negotiations, you're still doing that with Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Just so that we know that we, that's who I've been telling people to funnel their questions to.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, and thank you both for doing that. Other reports from the select board on things we need to know going into this town meeting, or prior to next Monday's meeting, which is going to be a night, as Mr. Buckman just mentioned, a year minutes ago, that we're going to have a first look at marijuana principles document, which Mr. Kravitz has been working on, and which Ms. Kruger and I have also been looking at with him, and it's quite extensive, and I think you'll find, reflects a lot of the different things, and pulls it all together in a place that we can look at, and then eventually turn it into more of an elevator speech, as necessary. The letter to the co-chairs of the committee is going out soon, and so that follow-up is in process, and then we'll also look at our special town meeting dates, because there's already been some question as to backing up things for items associated with our marijuana discussion, and when zoning-type items versus non-zoning-type items would need to get worked on in order to be ready for that fall town meeting. So we need, we're going to take a look at that slightly sooner than we usually do, although Ms. Pupple usually gets us set up with that in the summer, anyway. But we'll try and look at that next week, if we can have the time to put it together, because of course she doesn't just look at the calendar, right, she has to consider all the holidays and everything else that's in there, so.
Birthdays.
Anything else? Because then I'm going to ask Mr. Steinberg to make a motion.
I move to adjourn, second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And at 6:46 PM, we are adjourned, thank you, Amherst Media, we are awesome.